Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a roll call on McDonough?
Here.
Alvin Ramon Craft?
Here.
Alvin Cooper is instant on return.
Here.
On the bill.
Here.
On my list.
Here.
I get a motion for approval of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes, please.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to special items, we have none appointments to boards and commissions, we have none. Moving on to scheduled public comments, the first one on the list is Corey Myers. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Corey Myers, my address is two two six three five South Kensington, Harcourt.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder, it is policy, we have a three-minute time limit, so just let you know.
Yeah, I was gonna ask for more. I don't feel like that's adequate, you know, maybe I'll be three minutes, maybe I won't. I think I deserve it for what I do for the community and the money I spend here.
So.
To only give you three minutes is kind of disrespectful.
It's not disrespectful, it's a standard across the state, a member of this board can by motion extend that time if wished. All right, and you guys like to make a motion?
How much time are you wanting?
At least until I get done talking, I mean, it's not gonna be much more than three minutes, I don't think.
I don't think we can make the motion for however long.
So two more minutes, five minutes.
Five minutes, all right, I'll move to allow us for my ears, five minutes.
Second.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Yep.
So I guess we're still talking about the.
Take a vote on that, Alvedonway? Do your voice go? All in favor?
Aye.
Clint, sir, sorry.
We're still talking about the easement you were trying to get through Middle Creek. Does anyone have any opinions on that, or has, are you all still going for that?
We're still discussing it, yes.
Still discussing, okay. I don't think the, the engineering wasn't done after I built that lake, so it's not correct on that easement in the first place. I guess I'm just talking, um. So I'd just like to let everyone know what I've done for the city. I donated the land for Rankin with Larkin. I finished Sunset Meadows, I've done Middle Creek, Forest Park, I saw Phase Three, did Phase One. I brought O'Reilly's, I'm getting ready to bring a restaurant, I think, I'm not sure. They're ready to come on Lot thirteen next to O'Reilly's. I own six, seven, and eight in Ashland Plaza. Lots one and two in Perry. Bluegrass, right across from the medical field, I own that. I own the one next to Jose's, and I'm not really interested in continuing to do business with you all if I'm gonna have to fight you all every time I get to try and do something. With this easement, is Darren here? Rundman, he's not here, is he?
No.
Okay, well, I had offered to deal, to work with you all, with him, before any of this started. And he said that, he couldn't believe that that was fair of me, and he told me that Kyle said that, ah, he wasn't gonna tit for tat, and he'd take it from me. He did, he's not doing, he's not gonna work with me on anything. So that's really all I have to say. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to Travis Lester.
Travis Last, three six oh five, Caspen Circle.
Thanks, sir.
Same thing, this is what Corey said, this, the engineers are way off. They didn't calculate it right, and I spoke with you when you were our alderman. You saw, nothing has been done. The spillway for three lots are cattails and trees that are twenty-five feet tall. Nothing has been done, and the solution is, let's put more pipes in them. Let's take out all your trees, let's devalue your land, let's take out the fence, oh, you have a dog, we might want to put a temporary fence in, all of this based on an engineer that contradicts a previous engineer of Crockett that said this works, and a resident that's been there that said, yeah, it all worked until it didn't get maintained. So last week, are, is the city responsible for anything past the spillway?
So I have a letter that's in the mail system to you about that matter.
Okay, so if, if that's the fact, it's been a, ever since we talked, years ago, it's been a, is it a Bill Martin thing? Because he owns the three houses, it is a city thing, so if nobody's maintaining the spillway, where does the water go? I've seen it with my own eyes, now taking out all these cedar trees and all of our beautiful surround that we have that absorbs the water, that's not gonna, that's not gonna fix the problem. And if one engineer says one thing and it works, and another comes in and says, yeah, well, we can only do it this way, it just doesn't make sense, and I understand you guys aren't, it's been going on for so long, I don't know how long some of you have been here, I know some of you have been here for a long time, but if, if you don't have the right information, how can you have the right calculation on what pipes need to go in? So do we need to take the whole row of trees out, do we need to add a pipe? I say we clean up what's there, the whole subdivisions silt from point A to Z is all in the retention pond. It's never been cleaned. Wouldn't you standardly do maintenance on that? And everything from our first meeting was recorded, all of the responses from the engineers, from the city, everybody. I mean, I just want this to go away without bringing in media or something that just basically says the city has not maintained, and everybody said that nobody can maintain it because it's a DNR issue. Is it a DNR issue if it's somebody's backyard, or is it, is it an incompetence issue of it just never got done? And when we brought it to your attention years ago, it still hasn't been done, and isn't done today. And that, and then the, the water, the soil levels below the pipes from a resident that's lived there for twenty years said, yeah, that used to be two feet deeper, now it just, it's right underneath the pipe. So there is erosion that's never been taken care of. Now Corey did put a burrum, the entire length of the, of that whole field plus the lake, so the only dirt that would through erosion, it misses all of our yards, it misses all this project, and it goes straight into the spillway that's overgrown. So the only water off of that whole entire field is going straight into the spillway.
My thoughts, sir.
The spillway is not being addressed, and last week when I brought this up, you said you're responsible for the pipe.
I don't think that's what I said.
That's what you said.
But I'm happy to chat with you after, you're through the truck, appreciate the comment.
So.
Thanks, sir.
Could I, could we get an answer tonight as to who's responsible for the spillway? That all this water and all this project and all this engineering is going to go onto, that nobody is gonna touch, and it isn't written anywhere?
You're through the truck. We'll get, we'll.
Thanks.
Appreciate you, sir. All right, we run Alan Beckett. Please state your name and address, please.
Alan Beckett, been a community, member of this community since nineteen seventy-one.
Can you get your address for the record? Your address, sir.
Seventy-eight oh seventies round Y.
Appreciate it.
All right, my, my concern tonight is along with some of the other folks here, but mostly. We moved here in nineteen seventy-one, my family and I moved here, and we came from northeast Missouri, and when we moved here, Highway sixty-three was a two-lane blacktop road, basically, no, no four-lane anywhere. We had one deputy, one police chief, and his name was R.T. Perkins. His daughter was a classmate of Darla, and I was a class of eighty-two, and he was usually in Ashland, you know, monitoring what was about six hundred people at that many at that time. I don't know what the consensus is, does anybody know what our population is now?
A little bit over five thousand.
Yeah. Things have changed a bunch. So I'm here, number one, not to tell people how to do their job or what to do, but we've had many, many police chiefs since then, we've had a guy named Dunwoodie, we've had John Chevalier, and Mel Rupert, Scott Robbins, and many more. The one that sticks out in my mind the most was Lynn Wolford. He had our community at heart, he maintained a safe environment for our kids at crosswalks, he made national news, he got recognized nationally for his efforts. And I'm not saying anybody is doing a bad job now, but when I leave Ashland to go to work on Thursday nights in Columbia, and I see two deputies out on Highway sixty-three running a speed trap and not in our town during peak hours of traffic, it's a little alarming, and I would think anybody with common sense would think that it would be a good idea to have our law enforcement agents in town where they need to be during peak traffic. My idea of peak traffic would be seven o'clock in the morning till late thirty a.m. in the morning. That would be peak traffic. If you've ever been around the roundabouts during those hours, you'll understand and know what I mean. And I can bring proof to that next meeting if you need me to. Another time and day that would be important for police presence and proactivity in the police department would be three to six p.m. of an evening. From the time school gets out, our kids and our pedestrians are walking around on these streets, and it's a racetrack down Ash Street. I can prove it. I've seen it with my own eyes, my mother's seen it with her own eyes, it's a fact. When there's no police presence in Ashland, people don't act the same as they do. And anybody that doesn't agree with that doesn't have a brain in their head, as far as I'm concerned. All I'm asking is that our police be where they need to be during peak traffic times. I don't care what they do after that, they can go out and play radar games on the highway, they can run up and down Route Y, they can go down sixty-three, whatever they wanna do.
Final thoughts, please.
Final thoughts?
Final thought.
My final thoughts are, is I'd like to see some changes brought to the police department and some concerned citizens. I've got several people that could fill this place up with my same point of view.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Moving on to Philip Partridge.
Philip Partridge, six oh seven, springtime. My biggest complaint is, I got pictures here of my driveway and the end of springtime. This happens on light rains, this is not right, really, really rains really hard, and the city, on the winter time, all they do is they push or snow into this, into this street, which fills up the water that drains at the end of this road. There's only one storm drain at the end of this road that catches the water on this side of the street. This water that's running on this side of the street is coming from the Optimus building, which they have a drain, which is another picture of this picture of all the flooding of the backyards of the houses that come from the Optimus. This has been going on for six years that I've lived in this house, and nothing has gotten done. Every winter, they just keep pushing stuff into that and filling up that drainage every year, and if they go and engineers go and try to fix this problem, it's just gonna cause more water flowing into this part that is flooded and overgrown, and no water can go through. That's basically all I got to say.
Thanks, sir, thank you. We run to public hearing, open up the public hearing of annexation of McClellan and Foster's track. At this time, we will open, at this time, we'll go into public hearing. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this, on that?
I would.
Please.
Hi, this is Kieran Aaron, one four one seven eight South Highway D D. So I just, if, if, they make these city lots, how is the city gonna maintain these? Is there gonna be sewer and water that comes into there? So where's all that gonna come from?
It's from Christie.
And so the property that's behind that has water that comes down my driveway, so you're gonna come down that lane and not the other direction?
Yeah, so for city utilities, it has to come off Christie Lane, yes.
Okay, and so.
The water that's on that driveway is consolidated water.
And with these properties, is there gonna be multi-residential, is it gonna be single residential, is he gonna be able to put?
As far as what's been proposed, it's two estate tracks.
Okay, so single families only?
Yeah, it's two lots, so yes.
Okay, and then, so it's my understanding that with Boone County, when you have a lot, you have to have more than five acres. So this property was purchased as like eleven acres, and now it's being divided. They took the property out of their name, put it in their daughter's and son's name, and now it's back in their name so they could subdivide it, how is this, how is this right?
I mean, I can't speak to the subdivision because that occurred under Boone County's jurisdiction. What they're proposing is simply to annex these two lots into the city to, to have single-family dwellings on them.
Okay.
And I would further say, and I don't wanna overstate, I'm not familiar with particulars here, but, I mean, you can transfer property all you want, I understand that it might appear suspicious, and I don't know the particulars, but it's perfectly legal to move property from A and B and reverse it.
Okay, and then, so like emergency vehicles, how's that gonna work? Is it, is there, is that where it comes off Christie, is it just gonna stop there?
So they, they'll be required to put a fire apparatus turn around, so.
And where would that be?
Right there, at the end of Christie.
At the end.
Beginning of the lots, yeah.
Okay. What are they gonna do with this, the sewer and the stormwater, because that's on a hill, and there's a creek that runs at the bottom of that property? So who's gonna be responsible for that runoff from those, that, those buildings? Because I heard that we've had some problems with runoffs here, so this is my, because there's a creek at the bottom of this property, and it's all downhill, I wanna make sure that this is gonna be addressed before.
You're saying there's a creek on this tree line, is what you're saying?
Uh, no, it's on, it's to the left, so you see where those tracks are, right there, there's a creek that runs there. And I own that property to the left, right there where that creek is.
Okay. I mean, sewer, like I said, will, will come down to Christie. I really can't speak to anything on the stormwater, they're, they're not creating a new subdivision in which stormwater requirements would be in place, there's building homes.
Okay.
So there's generally not a whole lot of stormwater considerations that go in, we're just building a house there.
Okay, I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
You bet. Any others of the comment, please take.
Yeah. Hi, Kent Dunwoodie, W-O-O-D-Y. And I live at eight oh three Silverado Court, so my house is gonna be just on the edge of that, that's correct, right? Nope, go back over, one more, that's me, right there. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I understand that these two acre tracks are just gonna be single-family, they're not gonna be subdivided, is that correct?
The proposal right now is just those two lots.
Okay, well, could that change?
Someone could buy them and change them in the future, yes.
Okay, well, that's, and that's my concern because, reason why I actually bought in Ashland just a couple of years ago was because of that nice area back there, and my backyard, I didn't have to face a lot of neighbors, so. But you did say, so that, even though it's zoned as single-family, someone could change that to subdivided.
So right now, it's not zoned anything, when it comes into the city, when we annex property, it comes in as ag, and they have to request a rezoning, so presumably, they'll request R one, which is a single-family residential to have two estate lots there.
Okay.
I believe that's the proposal that they've put forward, but again, let's not say that that property doesn't change hands at some point in the future, and a new.
Now, on lots this size.
I would interject further, changing a zoning is not a simple matter of, hey, I would like to be R three so I can build duplexes. There is a planning and zoning commission, there's a process, there are public hearings, that's not to say that a person can or can't, there is a process, but it is not secret, it's not quick, it's not something that you, as in, for instance, forty years from now, if somebody decided, if I wanna try and build an apartment complex, and you didn't approve of that, you would have the opportunity to come and voice your concern.
Sure, okay, then, just, I think my last question is, when you have a lot that size, is it primarily just going to be houses only, and what I mean by that is no sheds, no businesses, those types of things?
So I mean, home-based business is legal, so I mean, someone could potentially, contractor, for example, could have a house and shop where there are storm equipment or trucks or whatnot.
But you couldn't put a gas station in unless it's been zoned to that purpose.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
You bet, sir.
Any other comments from the public on this party? See, done, so we will close public hearing. Move on to introduction to first rings, we have none, old business, none, new business, Christina Lubert from Lubert Engineering, presentation discussion of Sunshine Stormwater Issues.
So.
Could you introduce yourself just?
Sure, sure, I'm Christina Lubert, I'm the city's contract city engineer, also the owner and principal engineer for Lubert Engineering. I was asked to look at four oh three Sunshine Drive in late October to make a recommendation. I made that recommendation, and I was asked to present that information to the board. So I'll try to go fairly quick through this, understand the area that drains to it. Four oh three Sunshine is in yellow there, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but in that bottom left-hand corner of that shaded area, and if you'll look at the measurement on the right, it says it's about twenty-one acres that drains to that, that does include some of the Optimus land, it also includes the vet clinic and the funeral home and the new storage facility, et cetera, and the other businesses out there on the, on North Henry Clay. There's the aerial view of that same area without the drainage, but you can see, and of course, this picture didn't show the storage facility, so I included the Google Maps that shows the area up there in the northeast corner of that picture of where they were building the storage facility. So the first, one of the first comments that I had heard was that they were concerned that the storage facility had caused part of this problem after a heavy rain event this summer where the backyard was apparently fairly flooded. So the storage facility, if you're looking at it in the north-south orientation there, they had built that first phase of, what is it, seven buildings, and in the bottom middle part of that lot, the, the part that kind of doglegs around, is it auto sales, I think, out there? There's a detention basin, this picture was taken of that detention basin looking to the west, and, excuse me, that's looking to the south, and.
Looking north. No, that's, that's looking south.
South, that's looking south, because the outlet structure is in the background of the picture. Anyway, this was when it was still under construction, it, before they finalized their construction, they do need to have it cleaned out if it hasn't been already, but they were using it as a sediment trap in the meantime. I reviewed that development for compliance with the stormwater code. At the time, the code said that they only had to detain to the pre-development rate, the twenty-five-year storm. They actually detained both the ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year events to below pre-developed condition. That receiving channel at the end of Sunshine.
Could you, on that last slide, just potentially explain that a little bit better for their understanding of what pre-development condition means versus their post-development?
So, so they had to, to calculate the discharge of stormwater from the facility, from the storage facility alone. Before the, it was built when it was just a grassy field, and then after it would be constructed. And this is the development, this is, this is how much stormwater's coming off of it, and then you'll notice that the post-developed numbers, so after construction, those numbers are smaller than the, than when it was a grassy field. So the detention actually will hold that water and release it at a slower rate so that it will be the same as if it was a grassy field. Detention calculations aren't perfect, but generally speaking, they did all of the appropriate due diligence to manage the stormwater after the storage facility. So the receiving channel, and like the previous speaker mentioned, the end of Sunshine Drive off to the west end there does have some issues. That channel is in the northeast corner of the school's property, and it is fairly overgrown. I looked at it with the public works director at the end of October, and we, we talked about trying to work with the school to open up that channel and clear out some sediment and some overgrown vegetation that was hindering that drainage, and it was actually causing the inlet, I don't know if this pointer will work on that screen, but the inlet there on the southeast corner of springtime at Sunshine was holding a little bit of water. The pipe was not fully draining because it was submerged at the other end, it had just been raining, so I don't know how much of that was, it just hadn't drained or whether that water stands there. But we talked about working with the school district to get that area cleaned out, and that's still on the agenda. I did want to look at whether or not easements were in place. This is a screenshot of the original plat of the area. You'll notice that Lot one thirty-three is, is four oh three Sunshine, it has no drainage easements. It probably should have had some drainage easements, but there's a utility easement in the rear that I think that while it might have needed to be bigger, it, it was not ever dedicated as part of the plat. And then lots one thirty-four and one thirty-five were actually replatted at a later date into one lot, that's now all one ownership, it also does not show any existing easements. Generally speaking, in, in most of the municipal cases that I have been involved with, if there is not a public drainage easement, it is not the public's responsibility to manage the drainage. And also, we don't necessarily have the right to enter that property to manage drainage. So that's just something to keep in mind as we make decisions about what to, what to or not to do. If we look specifically at four oh three Sunshine, there's a little rear shallow swale that was to divert some of the oncoming water from the north, from the Optimus property, and it's supposed to divert it to the west. And then there's also, because the house is fairly low, they, they put in some others, another swale that kind of goes around the side of the house and out to the street. When I was there in late October, this is the, the one on, the yellow arrow on the left is that upper swale. You can see it's not a significant swale, I don't know if that has just been, had, you know, sediment and, and turf buildup over the years has, has filled in, or if it was never graded as deep as it probably should have been. But the real problem is the significant amount of yard debris that is matted up against the fence, including an area where it looks like maybe they were trying to keep a pet in, where they've put some extra gardening fence next to the chain link fence. I'm not real sure what was going on there, but it was completely matted with leaves and, and grass. And off to the right of that picture, you can see the beginning of the swale that comes around the side of the house. That swale discharges in the front corner of their fence, and it was also matted with leaves and yard waste. And, and additional racks and fencing that, again, looked like maybe they had had a pet they were trying to keep from going under the fence. This area may have a little erosion, it was kind of overgrown and difficult to tell. Kind of another close-up of the outside of that fence, and you can see that it's got a significant amount of, of debris that has, has matted against the fence and is inhibiting the water from getting out of the property the way that it should to get out to the street. There's also some stones and some, some things that are on the next property to the west. So we're looking at that front corner of that fence, that would be the southwest corner of four oh three's backyard and side yard. And that discharges to an area drain that we have no record of. I don't know if this was put in by the property owner to the west as something private. It does not look like it's been engineered, because an engineer would not discharge a twelve-inch pipe to a gutter, which is what is happening right now. So I'm not really sure what's going on with this, it took us a while to even figure out where it discharged. And it's not ponded, so I guess it's functioning, but there was a lot of debris around it and some stumps and things that needed to be probably cleared out if this was going to be used to assist getting that water. If it can get through the fence, maybe it could get into this drain. So for my recommendations, I suggest that the owner of number 403 Sunshine needs to clear the yard waste debris from the fence to allow more free flow of water off of the property and prevent ponding behind their house. They may consider working with the owner of number 309 Sunshine to the west to remove debris around the private yard inlet. The city or the owner of 309 may consider in the future trying to tie that private yard inlet into the underground storm sewer system. Unfortunately, that would require that they cross Sunshine, but maybe when Sunshine is ready for an overlay, that would be something we would want to consider of trying to get that pipe into a more appropriate discharge. However, we would need an easement for that if that was to become part of the public system. And again, our intention is to work with the school district to clear the debris and overgrown vegetation from the existing drainage channel that receives the flow from Sunshine Drive. That's kind of neither here nor there to the 403 Sunshine problem, but it, it was, it's probably not helping matters for, for the end of that road to get flooded when that can't drain properly. So it would just, I was in the area, so I looked at it. Are there any questions? Sure.
Do you have a picture of the house?
Right.
And I've been here for six years and everything that comes off of the office goes down behind that house and that drain just pumps water out of it. That flood, that, this street has been flooded so bad that it's came up through my sewers and flooded my bathrooms. That's how bad this is going on. This has been going on for six years now. I don't know what's the, what the question or the answer is to get this fixed, but I don't know if diverting the water is going to do any good because the end of this street is like you said, it's just, the storm drain side drains into that waterway, but then everything on the other side of the street just runs down through the street into that waterway itself. So it's got two different ways of water getting into it and it don't have the volume to keep up and it floods, it floods every time. This is a light rain. This ain't even a heavy rain. When there's a heavy rain, I'm standing at the end of my driveway and I'm standing there knee-high in water. My house is up leveled, elevated high enough where I don't get water in my house, but they've had water in this house before, forget why. Because of the water ran, because of rain and nowhere for the water to go. And I don't know what, I don't know what the answer, I mean, this is going on forever and no solution. The, the city's not done nothing because, I mean, like I said, every year during the winter, they push all their snow into the bottom, into the street, at the end of the street, you know, packing everything into that waterway and water has nowhere to go. So it's just flooding. I mean, that's my question. What do we do about what's resist, what's already there before we start, you know, building ways of moving water around? Why, why are we not fixing what was already out there?
Well, one, one issue at hand is that water coming off the Optimus has no detention, but it wasn't required to when it was built.
I understand that. I mean, the supervision never fit for, for the law.
Sure. And there's, well, and really water backing up in sewers is a separate issue because it's, while it's stormwater related, that's a inflow and infiltration problem with the sanitary sewer system. And I don't, I would have to do more research into that. But, I mean, I, I think at this point, the only way to control the, the water that's ponding at the end of Sunshine is to give it a place to go and that's, it's naturally going to the existing channel, but that channel is completely overgrown and with debris and sediment that it's not flowing well.
I'll walk that whole thing.
We'll, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions at the board?
From the board.
Christina, on this issue? Or any other discussion about 403 in particular?
So is on, is it on the school's property that all this is?
So if we go back a few slides.
Yeah. If we go back here, so the school owns that property that, just to the west of the end of the road. And there's a, a pretty significant channel. I think there's a practice field maybe over here. That, that channel that kind of, it wraps around and then heads to the west over towards the school.
You think if we take, if, I say we, I mean the school, maybe in partnership with the city, take out those trees and build a bigger detention area, that would help with this?
That's not what is being suggested. So that's, that'll be a protected waterway. We can't go in and do work on the channel itself, but we can certainly clear out the vegetation. If you were to look back at historic photography, a lot of that vegetation wasn't there. So that's kind of part of the issue is that there's been a lot of buildup and the city's gone in the past and knocked some of it down. We've, Kevin has it scheduled with the school district to do some work out there to try and knock it down again and, and get it. In terms of reshaping that drainage channel, there's no intention to do that at this point.
You say the director of waterway, is that DNR?
It's federal.
Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineer. So that would be a lengthy permit process.
But you can, you can do maintenance without, with, under their nationwide permitting program.
And you can't dig deeper or anything like that?
No, you're, we, and, and you wouldn't be able to because it's a fairly flat channel looking at the photography. I don't think you could change the slope of it or, or the width of it significantly without getting into a lot of hassles, but you can clear the debris off of it that will make it flow more freely and...
Yeah.
And that's kind of what we schedule, slowly work at the school and try and keep some consistent pressure on that to keep it cleaned up.
That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, Resolution 2025-60, Resolution rescinding, Resolution 2025-4, 454, introducing a new resolution authorizing the purchase of replacement washer compactor assembly for the wastewater treatment.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. This one could get a little confusing because it is, about a month ago, I brought up a proposed purchase for an escalator, which is a different piece of equipment than what I'm talking about here. That was approved for $30,146. That was based on the, basically a package rebuilt from the distributor. What we found is that it didn't bear much resemblance to what we actually need. So that is being rescinded tonight and replaced with another piece of equipment at the headworks that actually is a more priority. So tonight I'm seeking the authorization for the purchase of replacement of a washer-compactor assembly for the wastewater treatment plant from Hydrokinetics in the amount of $22,862. So it's related, but it's a different piece of equipment than what I talked about last month. The washer-compactor is located at the headworks. Its primary function is to clean and separate inorganic solids, plastic, and rocks from the waste stream. So in short, the, this piece of equipment, the auger-compactor failed just a few weeks ago in mid-November. Cause of the failure was due to a greaser being hidden by an electrical junction box and no, it wasn't in the ONM. So we found out the hard way and the following list is it, items that are required to make this unit functional and that are in this proposal. It's a leather blade and bearing house, bearing house assembly, transmission stubs, stub shaft, a stub shaft key. We're bars, free all told, is $22,862. And again, from what I spoke with earlier, the, the other piece of equipment known as the escalator, that I'll have to come back for that one, but it will be significantly less, I would say probably half of the original estimate because some of those parts we're having fabricated, other parts we just don't need, and then there are other parts that we need that they can't actually identify even though they built them. So that, when we get our stuff straight, I'll come back with that. But again, this is for the washer-compactor assembly in the amount of $22,862 and I recommend approval. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Is the current escalator working right now?
It's, uh, it's down because the compactor is down. So we're taking the opportunity to actually go through it. It's, uh, it could operate, but it's, it serves no purpose without this other piece, so we're doing maintenance on it.
How will this impact your budget for the year?
Budget's doing well. We were prepped for, made some major replacements. It fits in the budget quite well. Budgetarily, we're still healthy with these, with these purchases and we'll make it fine till the end of the year.
Any questions? All right, I get it. Motion proven. Resolution 2025-60, a resolution rescinding the resolution 25, 2025-54, introducing the new resolution authorizing the purchase of a replacement washer-compactor assembly for wastewater treatment.
So moved.
And second?
I'll second.
Alvin, Alvin Warren, Randcraft?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Donwiddie?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
And Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Moving on to reports, just one thing, just a reminder that our Christmas holiday dinner during the city hall is December 19th. So if you have nothing to do at night, please attend. That's my report.
Just to piggyback on that a little bit, Leslie has sent out the RSVP, so please get back to her if you have not, so we can get a solid head count for that luncheon. And just to kind of piggyback on that a little bit more, we do have some board vacancies. So we had a resignation from the board of adjustment, so we're down to four on that board. It needs five to really function well when we need it to. So if you know anybody interested in serving on that board, please have them fill out the application. Same with our other boards and commissions, we're always taking applications for those boards. Park board could use a few more folks on that board. And that's all I have.
Moving on, city attorney's report?
Uh, I have no report. I don't need a closed session. I will be sending the members a memorandum via email today or tomorrow, but that's all I need to do.
Thanks, sir. Public Works, mostly the board.
What'd you get, Mayor? A new streets department employee, Archie Hendren, started yesterday, who comes to West from the city of Columbia. It's kind of a trend lately. With that addition, that puts all public works at full staff. First time since I've been here. Yeah, odds. Under stormwater, kind of dovetailing into the discussion on Sunshine, there was a meet held for the two residents at the end of Sunshine about two weeks ago concerning proposed stormwater work on private property. We have no agreements pending, but they are open to it, of course, because it's free. I wouldn't blame them. But that's, if the, if the board so choose to do that. I would agree with the narrative that, at least as far as the stream goes. And again, just an update on the end of Sunshine, we are going to clean up the end of Sunshine to the creek, but as was said here earlier, there isn't a lot of volume. There's not a lot of place for that water to go. We're going to do, you know, what's required of us and it should be done, but I'm not sure that's going to solve the complete issue there at the end of Sunshine. Nothing going on as far as park improvements and maintenance for this time of year, other than we've got the Christmas decorations up in the park. For the sanitary sewer side, kind of addressed this earlier, two mechanical components of the headworks currently down, one was addressed today and the escalator resolution will be brought back up. And then also the vehicle, which was approved here last month for the new sewer utility supervisor, was sold, even though they said they were going to hold it. So I'll have to come back. I do have a new price for a new vehicle, it's slightly less, and I'll bring that back up next board meeting. We did have a pretty good snow and ice event. I think our rookie staff did pretty good. We had the usual equipment failures, which you have at the beginning of the year, actually all through the year, but we had a few. So this event wasn't too tough. We'll get through that, get these things repaired and be ready for the next one. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Any questions?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You said that you don't think, you know, cleaning out the brush and everything like that will fix all the issue. What do you think will fix this issue?
I don't, I don't, well, in my opinion, again, only been here six months, I understand that this problem or this issue has been ongoing for pretty much in perpetuity. I guess, in my opinion, again, the only thing I can do is, is what I have done, and that is to get with the school district. Basically get on their property and they've allowed that, they're going to allow me to do that, and clean up from the end of Sunshine to the convenience, to that stream. And that's really all I can do. Long-term, as Christina said, there's not a lot of volume and there's not a lot of width to that channel. If you're asking what the city could do, it would be, I mean realistically, it'd be a multi-six-figure project, multi-year, just in the engineering alone. It's not a problem that just started. It's a problem that's always kind of been there and then attention has kind of shown a light on it recently. It's not new. And long-term, I'm not, I don't have any answers for that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, we've heard people talk about it for the last few months and I realize it's a big dollar amount, you know, but at, at the end of the day, people are willing to take their Tuesday evenings, express their, their concerns. If it was my home that was having this bathroom and backflow, I'd be very concerned about it as well. So I just, I want to, I know that the city's working visonately to find a solution to this problem, but I, I also want the public to know that, you know, we're not, you're not falling on deaf fingers either, like we're, it is an issue.
Certainly not. Like I said, I'm going to do everything I can do. Long-term, and a larger, more effective solution would require a number of stakeholders, not just the corps of engineer, but the school, the state, the DNR. Kind of makes my head spin thinking about it, but that would be quite a thing.
Yeah.
To, to better answer your question, the, the process would be similar to that which was done for Billy Josap, for Caspian, for Oak Street. You start with a PER, Preliminary Engineering Report, which is a, a deeper dive than what Christina did into what the actual issue at hand is and possible solutions. And that's presented to the board, which was done with those projects. You have a engineer's recommendation on the best course of action. The board takes action on, accepting that as the best course of action. The engineer moves forward with designing it and then they bring it forward for construction at such time that the city decides they want to construct those improvements. Keep in mind, on this particular issue, unlike Billy Josap, Caspian, and Oak Street, there's no current easement, so as Kevin alluded to, many more stakeholders, easement acquisitions, et cetera, to facilitate any type of engineered solution if one existed.
What would a PER cost the city to get one done?
I don't recall what all state's last PER cost us. Twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars probably. That predates my time.
It's a shame that former boards, former city managers did not take this into account when this was built, but this is a problem that we're faced with now as a current board. And we want to make sure that we're doing what we can because if it was my house, I would not be happy.
For sure.
And we appreciate you going on the school's property to do what you can in the meantime.
Yeah, I do appreciate the school being responsive and they're doing what they can too. I do appreciate their, their help.
Alvin Larsen, we've had his report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, happy to report that the two valve insertions, the emergency repair valve insertions were completed on 11/11 with the help of empty construction, which like I said, with that, it will help us isolate the north tower from the south to the north for future connections, extensions. Water staff also has completed all valve insertion on the north half of the ci, or not valve insertion, sorry, valve exercising on the north half of the city. They've also went back. They've also went back and cleaned out any valve boxes that had any silt, mud, just so that this winter, if we do have any issues, we can easily get onto those valves. Don't have any issues. We also planted the trees on the north, at the north tower, well five, just as a buffer zone from Highway 63. Also, we, Emmer Sap has completed the tie-in to going north down Henry Clay, the 10-inch main that we were working with Givler Storage on. That has all been completed, just waiting on testing to come back. They did the sampling today. Once that comes back, then we'll be good to go. That's all I got. Any questions?
Moving on, the board of aldermen report? Almond Lewis?
No report.
Almond Turner?
I just want to, I want to say it again, I really appreciate everyone coming tonight. I know you guys would much rather be doing something else than coming to talk to us, but, you know, I think, I think a lot of times the city gets the rap that we don't care about its, its citizens, and that's just not the case. If I, if I had a $2 billion budget, we'd fix all your problems, and I'd probably get reelected forever, but, you know, that's not the case. But I do appreciate you guys coming and, and speaking tonight, taking your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, 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 Donwiddie?
No report.
Almond Ramcraft?
No report.
And Almond Bill?
I just echo what Sam said, you know, we're, we're trying for you guys, we understand that we don't always have the funds to do everything that the city folks would like us to do, but we're, we're doing our best and we're trying. I think most of us up here are pretty new, so we inherited a lot of problems, and we're doing what we can to try and help you guys out as much as we possibly can.
Moving on, comments from the general public?
I'd like to add one more thing.
Please come to this podium, station name.
One thing I did neglect is look at my notes, and I've been trying to reiterate this for days now, trying to make this as effective as possible. I notice all the time in the newspaper that we're getting vandalism problems in the park. I know for a fact that there are things going on over there in the park after school time, sometimes it's not such good things. It's very concerning. We have kids walking through the park, possibly other kids walking through the park doing dangerous things during that time. Why don't we put up a camera system over there so we can watch it out for our kids? It's a very simple thing, everybody here's probably got one on their house. It'd be real easy to incorporate that in our park, wouldn't cost much, and we'd have a full-time watchful eye over everything in that park. Number one concern for me is our kids. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments?
I just wanted to comment again on the engineering. So then we have the same problems everybody, everywhere everybody's inherited. So it was shocking to me to talk to the engineer when they had all the calculations and everything, but there was, there was no foresight on the discharge. So the same thing is, I, I assume that there's a good possibility that these two water entities probably drain into the same creek or the same discharge, maybe from Seasons Ridge and Palomino. I would assume they both flow that same way so that one doesn't cause problems to the other, so that basically, when, when the engineers are called to, to do their, their engineering, they need to, they need to, to provide a report as to where the water goes, not just the calculations of the inlet, but the outlet, and, and the, and the, because there's, when I've shot, there's very, very little grade drop, so everything that could go with this, take all things in consideration with the engineering, you might fix one problem but cause the other problem to, so, to, to get worse. You know, if, if you don't know where the water, where Z is from A to Z, and when I talked to the engineers and they, and they basically threw their hands up and said, well, that would be a DNR issue, we can't clean any of this out, there's, with hearing everything that's going on here, I feel like there needs to be a bigger scope as to the very ending spot of this water, maybe it's two miles from Ashland, but how all these impact that. So just, just a note to, of something to throw to the engineers, and since he said the park, I do have a close friend that offered to put in a pedestrian and dog water, it's like a $800 combination, and he was going to donate it, and he just never heard back to the dog park if they would just trench the water over there, because I know it is an issue not having water over there.
Who was it? Sorry.
Mark Hanson, and he just lost his wife last year. He's actually the, the Santa Claus that does the Liz and Rocos, him and his wife were missing, Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and it's all donations, and they do the children's hospital. He just tragically lost her last year, but they're, they're big dog lovers, and that was a donation that he was willing to buy the actual combined unit and donate it, and then you'd have to, of course, trench the water in, but I'm sure we could get somebody to donate that, too, just a side note, since we're talking about parks.
Thanks, sir.
If you guys have young kids, don't let them watch us on the recording, on the whole Santa Claus thing.
Yeah.
Do you have a comments from the general public? I hear none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
On favor? All right. You have a second? Second. Do a second.
Second.
Almond Fair?